Good afternoon. Welcome to the Public Safety and Government Operations Committee meeting. I'm Mark Conway, Chair of the Committee and Representative of the 4th District. Today, we will have hearings for LO-21-0015 and LO-23-0041. The first is legislative oversight on the Baltimore City Fire Department EMS, Stat, and Operations. And the second is a legislative oversight hearing on the fire department operations. In attendance, we have, of course, myself representing the 4th District. We've got Preston Lewis representing the Council President's Office. And Ty Lor representing the Mayor's Office. And Councilwoman Ramos joining us. All right, we'll jump into it. So the... Let's jump into it. I'll hand it off to Chief Wallace, and we can go for it.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chairman Conway, Councilwoman Ramos. I'm Chief Wallace. Thank you for the opportunity to present on both sides of the fire department. With me today, my lead presenters will be Assistant Chief John Id, who is the new Chief of Operations. My new Chief Administrative Officer, which is Dr. Shante Hart behind me. Chief Goodwin, Deputy Chief Goodwin is filling in for Assistant Chief Stewart. We also have Assistant Chief Matts, Chief of EMS. And my executive officer, Assistant Chief Kensington White. Each one or a subordinate of theirs as the SME will be presenting their areas of responsibility for you moving forward. So I'd like to turn it over to Deputy Chief Goodwin, and he'll start off with logistics.
Good afternoon. Thank you. It's Deputy Chief Jason Goodwin, Logistics. The first slide that I put together for you, it's the same slide that we go over each time. I just changed some stuff into the red. That's apparatus that we've actually had delivered. Took in a bunch of medic units. We're approaching 50% of the fleet being replaced here in the past few months. Have a few more that are getting ready to go in service over the next few weeks. They're just getting their final touches put in. We're going to be down in Florida the end of the month inspecting three more. Then you can see like the projected dates out. Again, the supply chain and the build times. You know, we're looking at 24 months on medic units, 40 to 48 months on heavy apparatus. You got it. Excellent, Chief.
Sure. And if I could interrupt just briefly, I know we have a pretty long presentation today, 100 slides. I just want to make sure we move through just so we have an opportunity for folks to ask questions. I have a couple of questions, and I'm sure Councilwoman does, about the recent fire in her district. I don't know, are we addressing that at all within the slides? Or do you want to tackle some of those issues as we get along?
Sir, we can certainly answer questions along the way as they come up. If, you know, if that's favorable for your questions, you know, to get them in, we're happy to do that, however you want.
If you want to... Councilwoman, I'll allow you. I'm sure you would like some additional insight on the recent fire on Keswick.
Thank you, Mr. Oh, much better. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I spent many hours with Chief Wallace yesterday and the incredible men and women of the fire department as we were addressing the... Obviously, the fire department put the fire out and working with the residents that were displaced and unfortunately had to go through the painstaking task of surgically removing all the debris from the effect... the house where it started to extract victims. And so I do want to publicly again say, you know, my condolences to the family. I want to thank all of you and all of the men and women of the fire department. I had both of my engines there, 31 and 21 and 25. Truck 25 was there as well. And so we've been in constant communication about what occurred and what are some things that we need to be more prepared about. And it has a lot to do with the spreading of the fire along the porch roofs and things like that. So I appreciate the opportunity. And, you know, we'll just keep in touch as we move forward through the recovery of... to make sure that resident... the displaced residents are okay and the family, that lost loved ones are supported. So we'll work together on that. Thank you.
And Chief Wallace, anything you want to add or walk us through regarding what happened with the fire? Any details that you're able to share at the moment?
So the investigation is still ongoing. They did ask for assistance from State Fire Marshal's Office as well as the ATF early on due to the scope of the incident, but also the volume of structures that were involved. That investigation likely will take some time. Tactically speaking, I was very pleased with not only the response time of our apparatus getting there, but individual deployment once they were on the scene. We were able to... So that was... that happened right before a shift change. So we had, you know, there was a challenge there. We had a shift that was going off, a shift coming in. One thing that I'm really proud of is the fact that our chief officers, our Chief of Operations, we actually debriefed a lot of that initial first alarm assignment before they left to try to get some facts, right, of what happened there. But also, they followed up throughout the day and into the evening with our stress management team, our peer support. So we've also been checking on a lot of our people as well. Everybody's doing well. We didn't get anybody hurt. I think tactically speaking, they did a very good job. They were faced with a large volume of fire when they first arrived. Lot of video running around on social media. You can see a lot of fire on the front porch. What you can't see is the horizontal spread of fire that was occurring in the attic spaces. So, you know, they had challenges with what they saw out front, what they saw out back, but they also had that horizontal spread at height, you know, two stories in the air. So it was a multi-faceted attack. One that, when I got there, it was very aggressive, it was very dynamic. But, you know, importantly for me, it was also very safe. There are a lot of things that can happen in fires like that that are moving that way. Unfortunately, we did have a loss of life. But as we normally do, our people entered into that operation committed, and they didn't leave. None of them walked away. I came downtown and went back up. The same people that were working in that vacant and around that area when I left were still there when I went back four or five hours later. You know, including Councilwoman Ramos. The commitment, I think, to the family, the community speaks to who we are, not only as a fire department, but as a city. And again, I'm very proud of the efforts of this department and a lot of respect for the community groups and the help that they've gotten out there as well.
Yeah, I want to echo the Councilwoman's notes on the excellent work you guys did in responding. And I think also that personal touch is really, really important. Really sorry to hear about the loss of life that did happen. And I think it's always important as we see these opportunities that we continue to learn. And I think this has maybe been one of those instances in which we've learned from previous fires in the past. And we always are seeking to get better at the work that we do. So I appreciate the work. You mentioned a vacant. Was the vacant involved, or?
No, I think... Sorry, Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Test, test. Okay. No worries. No, I think the... Obviously, when the fire broke out, all the houses were vacated. So there was the house where the fire started, and that's where the loss of life occurred. And then there was the house next to it that has been demolished because it was structurally unsound, and they needed an opportunity to work so that there was enough room and the fire department felt safe to be able to go in. So at that point, those houses were vacated. So there was not a vacant building with a vacant building notice on any of the houses. There were... there was one that was being rehabbed, so it was not occupied. But everything else was occupied. And everybody but the affected house were able to get out.
Thank you for clarifying.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, of course, the morning of... This is actually my route to work, to City Hall every morning. So, yeah, it was pretty jarring. It brings me to, I think, a broader thought, and maybe this is something we'll touch on a little bit in the slideshow today. But the weather's getting cold. We know that as the weather gets cold, we increasingly see higher risk, maybe not activities, but instances for fires, whether it be... and not just fires, but also carbon monoxide, folks who may try to heat up their home with stoves and otherwise. I'm just trying to think about how we can continue to prepare folks in advance and educate people as much as possible. I know as I was going through the slides in advance, I noticed we doing a lot of... we've been doing a ton of outreach. And I think this is, I think, one of those opportunities, not to say that the fire was necessarily caused by one of these instances, but certainly we're going to... we always do every year, see more instances of fires as folks try to heat up their homes with space heaters or otherwise, and any electrical fires that may result as a result. And then also, in light of vacant buildings, we know also that folks who are unfortunately living in these vacant buildings are sometimes setting open fires within these buildings, which they can lose control of. And so just trying to think about what we can do by way of education and early preparation as a department and as a city so that we can maybe get ahead of the problems that we know we see every year.
Yes, sir, and thank you for that. There's... So Chief Id, in the operations presentation, will... he'll highlight a new initiative that we have with regard to vacant buildings, forms that we've created that are now, we believe eventually will be public facing via 311, but Chief Id can highlight that. We're also extraordinarily fortunate to have recently hired a new Public Information Officer, Director of Communications, who's with us today, who is exceptionally aggressive at getting our word out through a lot of sources that we may not have either historically used or used to their fullest potential. So we certainly have some things that we are about to push with regard to bed shakers and things like that. But we will definitely highlight that as well. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, if I can add one thing, not related to vacancies, but related to this fire. So in that particular neighborhood, we've had three huge fires with multiple families displaced. And so after the... I wasn't in office the first fire. The second fire happened last year. It's almost a very similar situation, but we did not lose any lives. After that, we, the council, with Chief Em's help, passed legislation in the building code so that any new construction and also new porch roofs in rehab have to be made out of fire-treated wood to try to stop the spread, this immediate spread that occurs. And that's great moving forward, but, you know, I'm trying to think of ways to address the current because that's a big deal. And so as the... we know that the fire moved along the porch roof, so I wanted to highlight that. But as the investigation moves forward, there may be some other initiatives that the fire department and myself will come and possibly DHCD come to the council. Because if we can do some prevention work relative to, you know, how properties are, you know, dealt with, et cetera, then we may be able to prevent this in the future. So that is our job as council members, is to learn from what is here. But in the meantime, right now, the priority is to support the family who lost their loved ones and support the families who have lost their homes. And so we will continue to do that moving forward for the long-term future. This is not a quick recovery. The last fire, it took almost a year and a half, and most... and not everybody has moved in yet. So this is a big deal. I know more about insurance than I ever really wanted to. And that's also another issue for another day. But thank you for the opportunity to talk this through a little bit. I really do appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah. And last thing before we actually jump right into the presentation, just as far as outreach after fire, who sort of takes on that responsibility to provide resources to the families that are victims of the fire? Is that something that we take on as a department, or does some other agency sort of step in?
So historically, with fires involving fatalities, we would do a... some type of a safety sweep within the neighborhood within a week or so. We're now doing it within 24 hours. So we are right back out there, Councilwoman. We were in the district this morning, and they do a real in-depth, not only safety sweep with regard to smoke detector installation and functionality, but we also take the time to talk to homeowners about fire safety in their home. And I think key to the area where we were this morning is to remind people that, you know, given the challenges that we had with yesterday's fire and the one that the council woman referred to last year, fires run those porch roofs, right? So we need to be educating and reminding our citizens and homeowners have another way out. Especially in the middle of the night, you wake up, you're disoriented, muscle memory, you go in and out that front door all day long. Never even think about, you know, exits from the rear. So focus there. We also bring in early on, and we did yesterday, to Red Cross and other city services. So once that link is done, the fire department will follow up to the degree at which we can with fire safety, but we rely on those agencies or outside partners to continue to work through recovery as well.
So to that effect, I want to... I appreciate it. So we generally hand off to Red Cross and other partners? Is that...
Yeah. And we'll... I'll continue to speak to yesterday's incident as an example. We, as a department, aren't in a position to provide or assist with gaining temporary housing, but the Red Cross is. And I think we bear responsibility of identifying what those challenges are going to be, not only during the incident, but in the weeks to follow, and attempt to align those agencies with... and we want to do it before the residents leave. That's always a challenge, especially if they have families close by. We need to make that connection early on. OEM is another mechanism that we have by way to do that. So we'll follow up and continue to work to the degree at which we can. But the challenges are often financial, housing challenges. There may be issues with kids that have to move away from school districts and things like that. And that's where we need the outside help.
Yeah, I would... I think this is one of those areas where I am not as confident in my understanding of the next step for families after a fire in the household. I, you know, a couple of weeks ago, had a fire in my district and immediately got calls from folks and, you know, tried to piece together things as quickly as possible. Of course, we were able to help the family eventually, but I think in that, you know, that night, that day, it doesn't all necessarily come together. And so, you know, I think the family had to stay with someone else for a day before they were actually able to find somewhere to go. But in thinking through, we have, you know, only so many fires a year that result in a complete, you know, destruction of a home where they can't actually go back in or... and, you know, thinking about that process and where the handoff should happen and making it as seamless as possible, I think is an opportunity for us to be, you know, that extra degree of service. And I don't... I don't think the fire department should do that, but I do think the fire department should be able to provide that information, where to go next, and have it as easy and readily available as possible for folks on the scene, I would suggest. Just a thought. And Councilwoman, you had a...
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a lot to say about this.
Yeah.
Because I go to as many fires as I can make, and I've learned a lot. I had one particular incident a couple of years ago in Coldstream Homestead, Montebello. It was a renter who had a voucher. It took me eight months to get her voucher changed to another residence. And luckily, I knew, you know, I know people to be able to help. And it was my connections and my work that got her into the housing that she needed. There were no systems for her, okay? In this particular case, you know, I had to piece a lot of things together. There's actually a lot of people who also want to take advantage of our residents who have just been displaced. And they sit there at the fire.
Right.
Getting ready to talk to these people. And I had to play... I think the chief saw me yelling at one of them yesterday. He's the one I yell at all the time. So I think that we do, and I... the chief has talked... and I have talked about this, whether or not we need to have sort of, whether it's through OEM or something, to have, you know, someone who's going to be there, like the role that I was playing yesterday, and to continue to track how it's going with folks so that they get the help that they need, the advice that they need. I've made connections with insurance companies in the past, you know, four fires that I've had to deal with. I've made, you know, made sure that folks were getting the resources. I've answered all the questions. And so I want to do that.
I want to ask a question.
Yeah.
Do we have like a victim services coordinator within the fire department?
No.
Much like, you know, the police department has a victim services coordinator, someone to sort of help you navigate the system after the incident? Do we have anything like that?
We do not.
Yeah.
So that's kind of what I'm suggesting, is that there would be, you know, these... they have to be tough cookies to, you know, really work through this and make sure that they can... they're not going to be the insurance adjusters, but they're going to work with MIA, or they're going to work with, you know... and I have this whole... I've started to write it out so that we're ready when we do a budget ask to figure that out. So I do think it's necessary. There are some communities, like the community yesterday, where I think some folks are going to be able to handle things on their own. And then there are ones, like I described earlier, with this particular family that was just kind of left out in the cold, literally left out in the cold. And I was there for them until 11 o'clock at night when they could... you know what I mean? So that's the kind of person that we're going to...
Councilwoman, I look forward to working with you on what solutions would look like on this issue. Because I've... pretty much every fire, I've had the same sort of experience, that the handoff isn't... it's just not clear. And I don't... I don't think it's the fire department's responsibility to provide these services, but I do think the fire department should have a sort of list of sorts to immediately hand off or direct folks on where to go. And we need to make sure as best as possible that those resources are able to handle someone in an extreme emergency. So I couldn't agree with you more. And in thinking through this incident, you know, it's displaced multiple families at this point, I wouldn't be surprised if that need is here at this very moment for exactly that concern, so.
Yeah, definitely. The last thing I would want to say is that there's, you know, when you're displaced from your home, you're in a traumatic mindset. So getting handed a, you know, it's... sometimes it's literally coming back a couple of days later and, you know, doing that follow-up. So the first thing I do when I get to a scene is just make sure everybody's like, who's everybody? Where are they? And try to get their... if they're willing to give me their contact information. I had to do a lot of comforting yesterday as well. It was a very stressful day. And so I wanted to just make sure everybody was okay first before being able to figure out, to assess their needs and move forward. So, yeah, I look forward to working with you on this. I think it's necessary. I think, you know, there's a lot of other issues that I think we can tackle with that particular, call them victim services, call them whatever, that I think will be helpful as well. I was also talking to Delegate Ampere about... because he was on the scene later on in the day. It was his district about some other things that we need to do relative to insurance. So there'll be a whole thing that we'll be working on. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, Chief. Please, we got a lot to get through.
So with this one here, I just took a snapshot of the newest apparatus that's in just so you can see what was going on there.
Looking good.
Yep. Green energy vehicles, this is what we're trying to push through, our divisions. The eight hybrid SUVs we placed in service at prevention. We have those fully electric ones on order. We actually took delivery of the first one, the F-150 Lightning for OEM. That's down at the Upfitter now, being lights, radios, all that, striping being put on. You can see the other ones that are on order, working on the infrastructure side of that to get the chargers in place. And then the bottom line, just once they come in, they got to go through that radio striping lights. And then here's a picture of that OEM truck that hopefully within the next couple of weeks, you'll see that on the street.
Quick question, as the sort of EV guy here. Do you know if the... if this vehicle in particular has the ability to supply power to the grid? For instance, if this vehicle could serve as a backup generator in the case of an emergency?
I don't think so, but I can check into it for you. It's just like the standard F-150 Lightning that we got. I don't think so, but I'll check into it for you.
I think that's a question worth asking for you guys, because of course, in the case where we have a major power outage or a major emergency or a major disaster, you guys are going to be responding, and you might want the flexibility within these vehicles to serve in that additional capacity. And I know that this vehicle technically has that ability. I don't know if it's installed in the ones that we have. Just a thought.
Sure.
It may or may not be worth...
Yeah, we'll look into it. We'll get back to you.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
So shifting over from vehicles into station construction and renovation, this was the $10 million grant that we got from the state, which was funding the engine... 14-engine, 27 projects. 14-engine plans finalized kind of on our end, where we signed off with what we liked. Being sent over to permitting now to see if we can get permits, and then we're ready to go with construction as soon as that goes through. Engine 27, same thing, we're in kind of the design phase. We had the three sets of drawings, the total takedown of the building, keeping the front facade or keeping the entire building. It seemed like the most feasible one was to keep the front facade to get it through the CHAP hearing. We had that on the 8th. We're just waiting on that report to come through to let us know, you know, where we're at, where we stand in that. Engine 31 was the other $500,000 grant. That's all the way through the process. At this point, we're doing the final design phases on that, and then we're going to do construction when we get done with one of our other projects, kind of the same contractor, if that makes sense.
Quick question. Will the apparatus and the firefighters need to move during that time?
I don't think so. We're going to just kind of work around them. We're doing a 10-foot extension on the kitchen just to kind of make it more livable and functionable. I think if they can use their grill for that few weeks, and then upstairs, it's like HVAC boiler replacements. So I'm pretty sure we can let them stay in there. Yeah, I think we'll work around.
They're very busy, so it's hard to move them. Thank you.
Sure. This is another fund that we got, which was the 25 million ESPP funding through the medical. Basically using it, lead paint, individual sleeping quarters, gender neutral, cancer reduction, green energy improvements, just kind of sprucing up a lot of stations. We have three of them that kind of are in process now with many more planned. Engine 2, which is the first one we started down on Light Street, 99% done. We're waiting on the front bay door. I hope to have them in in a couple of weeks, by the end of the month. 52, we're in the design phase. There's some easement issues going on there. We kind of got a preliminary set of drawings, like what we see, but we have to make sure with easement and things like that, that we can proceed further. Fireboat pier, we put some money into that already. We have a temporary pier in place, but there's like moratoriums on when they can drive the piles and things like that, and then also getting the supplies in. So we're looking at December for that permanent pier to start. These are future ones that we're looking into, you know, same thing, total renovations, just running down the list there. And then ARPA funding came up for us on these. And these, what we chose to do was kind of stay in stride with the other plans, gender-neutral bathroom renovations. And you can see the list of stations there. We were able to kick one of those off on the 30th, Engine 45. Each one of those has about a 10-week timeline, complete gut, total new plumbing fixtures, the whole nine, all going to be the gender neutral so each person can have their own individual restroom. Generators, we have a bunch of those coming in as well. That's a little bit delayed in the permitting process. He's... has to do a lot of more legwork with drawings and plot planning. And then roof replacements, you can see we have five of those. Three of those are actually underway already. And actually, we kicked off a fourth one this past Monday, and they're progressing very well. 13 engines should be wrapping up in the next week or so. You got it. Excellent. The Fire Academy boiler removal, that's already been completed. It's totally out of there. We do have lead and concrete that need to be completed in there, but they weren't included in the ARPA portion of that, so we're going to touch on those later on. Truck 5, their geothermal system was failing, so we're replacing the entire three-unit geothermal system there. He's actually started breaking that system down now. It was on order earlier this week, but he started work there yesterday. And then following that, we're going to get over to Old Town, same thing, that boiler... Same thing, that boiler is starting to fail on us, so we wanted to stay ahead of it. Um, and then this is a picture of Engine 13's roof. You can see what the old roof looked like, the bottom right, and then what the new roof looks like, you know, in the top right. I mean, it's huge difference. Uh, this is the Academy's boiler room. Uh, you can see kind of the condition it was left in. The two boilers sat on those two pads, if you can kind of see where that is. And you, you can see that we still have a lot of work to do there and need funding to, to kind of finish that project off. But the boilers were huge, just getting them out of there, a lot of wasted space. Um, so this is part of like an innovation type thing that we're trying to do. And what we're trying to do here is using the computer program operative IQ. We're implementing, it's a new, excuse me, new digital tool where we want to inspect all our facilities. It's going to give us a quick assessment of all our critical infrastructure in there and then basically identify any deficiencies or things I need to get to. Um, it's a questionnaire system basically. And we're going to utilize the new iPads that the EMS got for the Tala 911. We're going to kind of dual purpose those, take the iPad out. Battalion technician with the chief is going to literally go room by room and answer questions based on, you know, what they see, lighting, ceiling, paint, flooring. Um, previous inspections were completed semi-annually on paper. There was often no follow-up or tracking, really just, you know, out of date. Um, records aren't easily found, they're filed in cabinets. Um, there's really no way to link similar problems. I'm really trying to link like our station, you know, all our 1920s are having the same problem or a third, because we have a lot of stations built in the same errors. So I can link those problems and trends together. Um, and obviously early detection of those trends so I can stay ahead of stuff so we don't have catastrophic failures. Um, the benefits of the program, it's going to give us real-time data. We can get it from any computer because it's a web-based system. Um, detailed record keeping of the maintenance required as well as performed. Hope going to get the, uh, cost, uh, tracking in there as well. And then again, we're going to watch those trends. Um, the initial inspection results are going to dictate like our ongoing inspection scheduling. We're, we're thinking we're probably going to be able to shift that to either a quarter or semi-annual basis and, and kind of do the same thing. Um, and it's also going to aid me in my CIP funding request for the year to stay ahead of those catastrophic issues. And examples that I had are like roofs, concrete aprons, we have those that just fail, the HVAC systems that are failing. Um, and then on the left-hand side, what we did is we actually loaded every single station's floor plan into the program. You know, I mean, it was kind of a tedious task with every single room. On the right-hand side, what you see is each one of those green dots is a specific data point that we're going to do. You would click on that data point. And then if you go to the next page, Chief, uh, these are your actual questionnaires based on those rooms. And they're very similar. The reason we, I put these two in was a kitchen and a bathroom have a lot of the same fixtures, plumbing, but they're actually different. That way, each room is individualized in each station to give me a very detailed report. And then it also gives my maintenance tech or DGS, whoever needs to go out, a real good picture on what they need to do. Um, again, and then my next step with this same computer program is to bring it over to my apparatus sign and assets. So again, the digital tool, um, inspecting all apparatus, including the assets, same thing, I want to use the iPad. Uh, so on the apparatus portion, it's a DOT style inspection. I'm looking for lights, brakes, tires. Any critical deficiencies are automatically going to generate an email to our apparatus repair shop. Anything that's not considered critical is going to basically create a repair list. That way, when that vehicle goes in on a preventive maintenance, we have that repair list. Um, assets, that's your high value items, your breathing apparatus, your computers, thermal imager, saws, you know, stuff that's not expendable per se. Same thing, we're going to look and see if it's there, if it's functioning, and then just verify it, you know, maintenance. Um, my goal is to have this up and running by the end of the year, I, I hope. Um, we trialing it now with three companies and it's been very successful generating those things. We have actually stayed ahead of some of the major apparatus repairs. You know, brakes squealing and then we get them in and they're not falling off, if that makes sense. Um, and then thi- this is just, um, a snapshot of what it looks like. The left-hand side, the blue is what the end user looks at. So what they do is inventory cabinets, asset verification, the questionnaires, and then the service, so they're on the left-hand side, they click on those tabs and then they complete their questionnaires. The right-hand side is what we see in the background. So myself, the apparatus guy, the shop guy, and in the very middle of that page, it's the deficiencies. If that, so that's kind of like the two things that you're going to get with that program. And that should be it for me. Thank you.
So, uh, good afternoon, Chairman Conway. I'm going to be speaking on behalf of Director Reddick today. Uh, in terms of the 911 Emergency Call Center, during the first quarter of FY 2025, 911 answered just over 376,000 calls. Approximately 80% of those calls were answered within 15 seconds. In terms of the hiring front, I'm happy to report that they had two new hires that began in October of 2024. We do however, have 10 vacancies in 911 and two in Fire Communications. In terms of outreach, uh, they've been pretty active over the last quarter. They assisted with the Towson GIS, their remote 911 center. They actually set up a 911 center, um, for the students and so forth to come out and look at what they're doing. Um, they assisted with the bookbag giveaway and Department of Corrections in Eden Street Community. And then of course, they also helped OEM and HABC at the Brooklyn Community Day. Uh, and then finally, Fire Communications actually won the APCO Middle Eastern Chapter Team of the Year Award. Um, so that's some of the highlights from the last quarter in 911.
I have a question.
Mm-hmm.
Um, of the hires, how many speak Spanish? You should just anticipate this question every time you come before us.
We do, that's okay. I actually have the text in front of me, so I'm going to pull it up real quick. I expected it, it's okay. It's, now I don't know, combined, there's a total of three Spanish speakers. There's also one that speaks Mandarin and one that speaks Arabic.
Okay.
So a total of five.
Yeah, way better than two years ago, so three years ago, so thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Still more work to do, but way better.
It is, it is. At least I had the answer for you in here. And then lastly, this is the NFPA Standard for Fire Communications, where they have to. In quarter one of FY, uh, quarter one of FY 2025, um, the 64-second answering response standard, they answer just about 85% of the time. Uh, in the 106-second response window, they answer just about 95% of the time. Oops.
Good afternoon. Does this work? Good afternoon, Councilwoman. Members of the committee, can you hear me? Okay. Uh, thank you for, um, allowing me to speak on behalf of Operations. I'm John Ide, I'm the Assistant Chief of Operations. Uh, this is my first, uh, committee meeting, uh, since being promoted.
Welcome.
Um, it's great working with you, Councilwoman, and thank you for being there. And, um, it, it was, it was really nice to see you there all day.
Thank you so much for everything you're doing. Appreciate it.
Um, my presentation today for Operations is going to focus on the operational activities, um, that our units are doing, training, uh, response data and ongoing initiatives. Uh, we conduct a lot of inspections, fire prevention activities and training and community events. And then we also are running some of the highest responses, um, not only in the state but nationally. So when we speak of operations, um, I'm just going to briefly, uh, concentrate on a couple of those bullet points. We have 32 engine companies, 17 truck companies, three rescue squads, one heavy rescue, and we operate multiple special, um, operations units. When we speak of our operations daily activities, um, we'll first talk about responses. Our average response per day for our, our units, um, is about 504 responses. Um, and then below that, you'll see a breakdown of our unit activities, inspections and training we conduct. A lot of the suppression companies' daily activities are directly tied to the city's ISO 1 rating, uh, which we know that's the highest level you can receive. Um, the Insurance Service Office, which is the ISO, measures effectiveness, um, for fire protection in fire districts across the country. And for us to have that ISO 1 rating, it really helps our citizens lower their cost of their homeowner's insurance. So some of these inspections that are included in that rating, um, we have hydrants, um, that we conduct every Monday. We have about 10,000 hydrants in the city itself and we do that twice a year. So we're expecting close to 20,000 hydrants. Um, and building inspections, we do Tuesdays and Thursdays for that. Um, that's part of our pre-planning, uh, fire planning. And the suppression companies each week perform probably close to 100 building inspections and pre-planning activities. Um, that also helps us for when we are going into something that we know where, um, where the utilities, uh, the fire maintenance panel and different things are in the building. Uh, on Wednesdays, we, we conduct the unsafe vacant surveys, which identifies our codex, um, structures. Um, this is extremely important, not only to our members, but the citizens as well. Um, you'll see in slides coming up, there's a recent decrease in the number of codexes being identified. Um, that's because we're several years into the project and there has been less buildings that are in need of the placards. Um, and we concentrate most of those in our TEZ zones. But now what we're going to do is we're going to expand out with housing's data and try to get the outskirts and compare what the vacancies are. Um, because we've really saturated the TEZ zones and I think we've, we've identified them. Um, while we continue to perform our unsafe, um, vacant structures, um, we, we constantly perform re-inspections of them too. And you'll see coming up in our structure fire status presentation, um, of what the city and you all are doing to help, um, not only raise those structures, but also re-enhance them. So, and, and we go out and we identify that. Um, Fridays, uh, is kind of our catch-up day. It gives us opportunity to do the inspections and activities, um, that we, we missed out because of weather or fire, you know, incidents that we had. Saturdays is probably our most important day for prevention activities. Um, generally speaking, we make about 500 attempts to do home safety inspections each Saturday and Sunday in some parts of the city. Uh, someone is not always home, but when we do, we get the opportunity, we inspect smoke detectors, go over carbon monoxide meters, the house, determine whether there's any CO in the residence. Um, and also identify and discuss fire hazards and other fire safety topics. Um, we've recently partnered with the Red Cross to do some, some, a great initiative for monthly sweeps. Um, and I will get that, to that on another slide. And then Sundays, um, is our unit, um, training. Um, we conduct a lot of unit training, uh, not only the, at the, um, unit level, but also the battalion level. This gives us an opportunity to train as a battalion. Um, and additional activities, um, we have EMT refresher, pump tests, ladder tests, uh, monthly subway inspections, community meetings and events, hands-only CPR. And all this, these, these, um, activities and training are put in our fire records program, which gives us, you'll see our database. And it also, again, it goes into that ISO rating, um, when they're handing out that information. Um, next slide, this is the partnership I was talking about. And this is one initiative that we feel is, um, very beneficial. Um, especially there's something that happened yesterday. Um, we can concentrate, um, these partnerships and their monthly, um, inspections with the Red Cross. So we partnered with the Red Cross several months ago, um, to conduct home safety inspections, uh, smoke detector installs and community engagement. We do a monthly event, which is the third Saturday of every month. And then we also do quarterly events, which are larger events. Um, our last one being up in the, um, Holland Town area, we had a significant fire. Uh, we determined that's where we wanted to do it. Um, that event revealed, we did 47 home safety inspections, 33 smoke detector installs and 144 detector inspections itself. Um, at these, we give out multilingual handouts that we have. And then we collaborate with other agencies, housing, BPD. And, um, it's, it's a, it's a great, um, initiative that we, we are starting now with, uh, with the Red Cross. Right now, they're on hold. Um, and I think same with the insurance companies, everyone's down south. Um, you know, concentrating on hurricane relief. So we're kind of on a brief hold, like a 60-day hold, but we're in contact with them. When they come back, those initiatives will start back up. Uh, inspections for our operation units, this is the dashboard that captures, um, next slide. This is the dashboard that actually captures all the data that we enter and all those inspections. I'm just going to highlight a few, um, 14,646 total inspections for this quarter. We stalled, um, 1,819 smoke detectors. We've inspected over 13,000 smoke detectors. And we've ID'd or re-inspected 408 code X-ray addresses. As you, as you can see up on the right-hand side of the slide, we're tracking TEZ zone inspections. Um, we had an increase in TEZ zone number five of inspections due to, like I said, several structure fires that we considered significant. And our crews deployed the, uh, additional safety sweeps and along with the Red Cross quarterly sweep.
Can you help me understand what the difference is between zone one through five?
Okay, so zone one through five were identified as some of the higher, um, higher, uh, structure fires and, and different things. Um, and basically, we, we broke them down into our zones, uh, they're, they're different locations of the city. So zone five is, is our East Baltimore, uh, section. Um, and that's where we had, um, unfortunately, uh, some fatalities on East Lombard Street in, um, Councilman Cohen's district. And that's what accounted for this. But I can, I have, um, what our zones are broken down to, I'd be more than happy to share them with you.
Okay, yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have a quick question.
One second, Councilwoman.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. On the slide with the dashboard, you have codex addresses. Um, is that number of inspections or number of addresses that are in codex, that are coded for codex?
Um, we currently identified 408 additional codexes. Um, that's not everything that's in our system, that's just for the quarter.
So the 14,000 is inspections, it's not inspections?
Correct. Yeah, that's, that's for all of our inspections, for all Monday through Sunday, um, events that we do.
Right, and so though, though you have 408 codex, um, properties?
That we identified.
Currently identified.
This quarter.
Oh, God, okay. This quarter.
And Councilwoman, I, I think it was one of your requests that we build upon for each meeting. So this would be 408 above what we had the last time.
Right.
So, you know, again, they're, they're, the numbers have slowed somewhat, but this is still a significant number for me.
Yeah, no, that's right. I mean, I, what I want to make sure is that the data that DHCD has is similar to what you're eyeing, because you're on the street. And I've, uh, seen that sometimes there's a differences just in when I walk down the street and look at my data. So that would be interesting to, um, to look at. Now, not every vacant building is as bad as, you know, some of the ones that we know are the hazards. But on the same side, we also, um, are witnessing that there are some houses that, uh, should be on the DHCD list that are not. So, you know, that, that's why I was asking. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, so we, the next slide, this is kind of our target enforcement zone. Um, comparative for the 23 compared to 24. And as you can see, um, we're showing a lot of progress, um, in structure fires in these areas. Uh, specifically zone five went from 46 structure fires. We're currently at 19, which is a 41% reduction. And overall, generally speaking, we're at 42.5 in all the TEZ zones, reduction in, um, structure fires. Next slide, please. This is, uh, the next presentation's, uh, the Codex Ray and Vacant Initiatives with Councilwoman will, um, show you a little bit more, uh, data, um, that we've captured. Um, the first data set, um, our total number in our system that we have is 4,969. We've added 1570 over the past year. Um, comparing the most recent quarters, you can see the next, uh, block down, uh, was 568 in, uh, the quarter prior to this, and we're at 411 now. So that was a 27% reduction. And we're, we're, again, defining a small decrease in those because we have flackered a lot of them. But, um, again, like I said before, the re-inspections are key to this, um, things that are raised and returned to use. Um, we're, we're definitely seeing that. So thank you for, you know, uh, your, your support in that and the city, you know, administration. Um, it really helps us when we're, when we're faced with these structure fires. Um, and, and, and we know that they, a lot of them have, um, people inside. So, um, since the, um, large number of codex rays, like I said, um, have been identified, if you look at the plotter chart, a lot of those are TEZ zones. We're going to start working with housing and we're going to do the outskirts. Next, this is a really, um, neat initiative. Um, Mr. Chair, you asked me before, I sat in here and talked maybe two times ago and you said, how many times do you encounter people inside of the vacant structures? how many times do you encounter people inside of the vacant structures? I didn't have an answer then, and we've been trying to develop policies since then. I just want to go through what we've created recently to share data with other agencies. So, it's a new initiative. And June 12th of 2024, we released an ops memo to track illegally occupied structures. Since then, we've identified 24 incidents that involve structure fires where we encountered people. And that's 32% of our vacant fires where we're encountering someone in those structures. What we found is that we're having a difficult time sharing that data because the old procedure was a lot of handwritten, carbon copy, paper, documents, narrative written, and it was hard to track. So, we ended up meeting on September 9th with the 311 administrators. And it was the quickest, most productive meeting I've ever had. They were like, sure, we can do it, here's the procedure. And basically, they developed the procedure, we developed the questions for our units to go straight through the 311 system to identify illegally occupied structures where we have a structure fire. And it's also public facing too. So, we created a QR code that we put on every unit. And we're also doing an initiative, which I'll talk about on the next slide, that helps our residents and the community engagement with door hangers to actually go right in for the QR code to report this and also information for people that are illegally occupying of how to get help. So, it's a great initiative. It just started running live Monday. So, we'll, we'll see, we'll have good data hopefully. And hopefully, we can flood those areas with community engagement, try to get the people out, you know?
That's really, really, really good to hear. I think one of the things in, the administration's representative just walked out. But I think one of the things we need to use this information to help us with is to understand the need. And this is, once again, not the fire department's responsibility, but certainly you guys play an important role in interacting with these folks who are, they currently don't have a home of their own, and so they're using vacant buildings. And we have city services, but those city services are often overtaxed. And so, you know, one of the, one of the questions I have for the, for the Director of the Office of Homeless Services was what is the actual bottom line need? How many beds, units, whatever the case is, as we build up the chain? And ultimately affordable housing units, as I look at my colleague here, do we need in order to meet the needs of folks that we're coming into contact with in the vacant buildings? And I don't have a denominator yet for us to fill. And so, this is really helpful. I'm glad you guys are collecting this data. This is really encouraging. I think also in light of the conversation we started to have in the beginning of this meeting, knowing that we're going into the winter months, we're going to see a lot more folks who may have been out on the streets now trying to find shelter in some of our vacant buildings and sometimes at a significant risk. And also, and I'll hand off back to you after this, one of the other things, Chief, I had the opportunity to do the ride-along with the population health team, which was absolutely phenomenal. Just really, really amazing team we have, doing amazing work and learned a lot from that team. One of the folks that we came into contact with was someone who was recently in a vacant building and fell through the floor and got injured doing so. And it, of course, begs that question when we think about these vacant buildings. Not only the, the risk that they bring to our firefighters, but then also folks that may be temporarily looking for shelter and don't know the current condition of the floor otherwise, you know, roof, floor otherwise. So, a lot of these things are connected. I think, you know, putting the red Xs on buildings, I think is instructive for our firefighters, but also for folks that may be looking for temporary housing just to get through the winter. And even more, that denominator, that bottom line, how many folks are currently undomiciled and need somewhere to stay? And what can we do by way as a city to make sure that we meet that need as quickly as possible? Because otherwise, they get desperate and they're going to rely on the vacant buildings that we have across the city in order to fill that need. So, connecting a lot of dots here, of which only one dot is your responsibility, and I appreciate it. But I do think it'll be helpful and instructive for our other agencies if we share this data and share this information.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, thank you for that. And I hope it does help. I think that's kind of why we did it this way, so we could data share with housing and whatever other agencies it's available. And we specifically have certain 311 requests at the bottom that we were interested in. But it's also allowing someone to know that there's people in this specific address. And hopefully, we can, we can wrap all the services together.
Yeah, and I know Ty Lor, I know you just walked out for a second. I want to make sure you didn't miss this piece. But we were talking about vacant buildings, folks who are living in vacant buildings. And now the, the department has been collecting information when they interact with folks who are living in vacant buildings. One of the questions that comes from that is how often, or excuse me, how many units do we need to, you know, safely meet the needs of folks who are currently undomiciled throughout our city, whether or not they're living in the streets or in our vacant buildings? There's a question I had for the Director of Homeless Services. And it's a sort of mushy sense right now. So, I really want to make sure this data is captured in a way that can be useful for, you know, other operations along the way. Just a thought. Councilwoman, you had your hand up.
Yeah, I just wanted to add, just to ask, when you were working with the 311 folks on this, and I am glad that there's going to be a 311 for residents to be able to say, hey, there's somebody in here. It's my understanding from talking with Commissioner Kennedy, and I talked to her a couple of times yesterday, but relative to this other situation, that they, when there is a, somebody in a building with a VBN on it, because it is designated as structurally unsound and nobody should be in there, that they do have the services that they have under Commissioner Booker's office to be able to work through that and try to get them to the place where they need to go. So, I was just wondering if you had already had that conversation with DHCD in terms of making sure that whatever comes through 311 isn't just, is going to not only homeless services, but also DHCD because they, because they have, they enforce the fact that it is an uninhabitable building. And so, they first go in to make sure that there's, you know, to try to make sure that they can get them into the place where they need to go, rather than there, and other services that they need because they're probably going to need treatment, they're probably going to need mental health, they're probably going to need shelter in a different, you know? So, did you talk to them already about this?
Yes, we did. I haven't specifically talked about our new process, but our old process that we did actually data shared with them because it went through the housing, 311, you would go through housing to the vacant, to the legally occupied. That's how our units were doing it. But it wasn't answering some of the questions that we thought were relative to other agencies and ourselves. So, when you type that QR code in, it goes to the 311 system. And if we type BCFD, we can input our data in there and it still goes through the housing and it's captured. But I will have a wraparound once we start collecting data to make sure that they can see it. I know that they already had something in there through the housing site to identify this specifically.
Yeah, that, I think that's going to be part of what you're asking, Mr. Chair, is that flow and then the end result. So, the end result, however, is the data that DHCD would have, not necessarily the fire department. So, we do need to include not just MOCFS, but DHCD in the, in the thinking around the flow.
Yeah, I think, I think the data that we're collecting here is one component of, I think, the broader data collection that will help us understand the needs, both from a housing perspective, also from an emergency housing perspective, affordable housing perspective and otherwise. So, yes, I think.
And Mr. Chair, is this, I just want to clarify, is this a committee request or is this more so just take this back to the?
This is to take it back to the appropriate parties. And I would love to, I want to make sure, because everyone else can't be in this meeting hearing about this data and these resources. But certainly, you're here. And so, the hope is that you can share some of these thoughts so that we see an opportunity to cross-pollinate this data, those resources, that data and those problems, so that we can think more comprehensively about how we resolve the problem.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, can I go back to the safety inspections? I'm sorry, I didn't ask this before, but I have a question about that. So, on the Saturdays where you're doing the safety inspections, I think it's a great idea. I was talking with one of the firefighters yesterday, or Captain, they're all wearing these fancy helmets. I can't always keep track of who's doing what. But, and so, I have a question about the, if you're seeing conditions in a home that would likely spark, if there is a fire, that it would be a way worse fire, like a hoarding situation? And what can be, what can the, since the firefighters are going in, they have a relationship with the resident, the resident trusts the firefighters, you know, firefighter's like, hey, you can't live this way because this will be a real problem. And, and have we closed the loop on that? Have we said, wait, we should go talk to DHCD about this? I did talk to Commissioner Kennedy about this yesterday while I was on site. And the, you know, that there are ways that DHCD is working through to try to figure this part out. So, I just didn't know whether, I'm just going to talk about hoarding in particular, but it could be really anything that could be a, not just the fact that they don't have a smoke alarm, but there is something there that could trigger either, trigger a fire or like a, you know, space heater or whatever, or the fact that there are conditions in the property that are just going to make it way worse. So, have you done that piece as well?
It's a common conversation that we have and our handouts address like home escape plans. And then we try to bring it up that this is not an escapable residence. You need to clear the paths for your exits, not only in the front and the rear. The data sharing with housing, I don't think that we have looped someone that would be hoarding to them when we're doing that. So, it's something we could look into doing. But I, we, I don't, I don't think that we currently share that information.
Some folks yesterday that that loop hasn't been created yet. So, if we can do that, and I'm happy to, you know, try to make sure that all that gets connected, that would be great. That was a, that was a situation in the union fire, okay? This fire yesterday is still under investigation, but the union fire for sure, that was documented in the, in the fire report. But it is something that I also have many constituents who are in that boat, that other constituents and neighbors are concerned about their wellbeing as well as the impact on their own property. So, in addition to the vacant piece that you talked about, I think that closing of the loop of how we can allow for and suggest, you know, working with residents who are just incapable of, there's other stuff going on in that household, there's no question. So, there's, there's got to be that holistic approach. It sounds to me like DHCD is moving in that direction. But again, this is just something that has come up many times in my district. And again, the union fire just reminded me of it yesterday because that was documented in the fire report as one of the issues. Thanks.
Thank you.
Yes, yes, ma'am. And there's some of our dangers, most dangerous fires when we get in there. So, we have put them in the CAD system, but we'll, we'll do that wraparound and see what we can do to, to make those notifications. The next slide, this is, this relates to the 311. You know, the data that we collect and where we're going with this is a campaign to distribute the door hangers. The door hangers is not only for the public in those areas where we identify the legal activity, but also for the people that are inside the dwellings, like I said. And our PIO can elaborate on that further, but we have some community engagement products. These are currently getting made up as we speak and they'll be on all of our units with the QR code. And, and it all ties in with that reporting system that we are creating.
Yeah, if you have any questions, let me know, the new PIO.
Next slide. Just go through a quick breakdown of structure fires that we've, you know, we've been talking about here today. This is just a breakdown of the status of the structure when we encounter a fire. One data point we're trying to get a better determination is the undetermined or other category here. Some of our units are having a difficult time determining if it's vacant or unoccupied based off of boards on the door, on the windows or the doors. So, this is an easy category to check. So, I'm going to dig in a little bit deeper into that and try to get better data. But this category also involves units or structures that are under construction, some garages, sheds and things like that. We certainly have some, have developed our policy and procedures for making better decisions for interior attacks for our vacant and code X-ray. And you can see those numbers here. I'll speak a little bit more about some of those techniques that we're going to be employing for our vacant and code X-rays. And next slide, please. Structure fires by incident. So, these are, for this quarter, actual fires that we've encountered that needed extinguishment is the AF. A working fire, which is WF, is when the incident commander requests additional help outside the normal assignment. A multi-alarm fire referred to as second, third, or on this slide is a fifth alarm. And then indicates units that are usually in need. Additional units are usually in need because the extension has, can't be controlled with the units on the scene. And as you can see, on this period, we had one fifth alarm. And that was a significant, significant fire down downtown district on September 22nd, 400 block of West Lombard, involved some mixed occupancy storefronts, both on Lombard and Utah. It was quite challenging due to the fact of the construction and the breakup of the, of, of the buildings. And we were very fortunate that we, our men and women worked very hard and we didn't have any injuries, you know, having that many people with that much fire volume. Next, fire suppression responses. This just breaks down all of our incidents that we respond to by district. The top three districts are, have been consistent over the past quarters. District 11 had 6,087 calls into that district. District 12 over 4,600 calls and District 9 over 4,000 calls. It breaks down EMS suppression responses and then total number of responses for each quarter. Next, suppression unit, call volumes by total responses. This, we're consistently busy throughout the year. We average about 12,500 calls per month. This just shows a breakdown of fire versus emergency medical service calls. Blue being emergency medical services and the orange slash red is the fire calls that we're responding to. You can see that our fire units are dispatched with a significant number of EMS standby and support. When there's a delay in the EMS transport unit, we are dispatched and we're usually on the scene within five minutes. Fire response times, I'm just going to briefly touch on this. This is just our response time from the time we get alerted until the first time a unit hits on scene. And a majority of the time, it's under four minutes, which it's, that's the NFPA standard. If you see a couple of the other ones, four to six minutes, typically our first do is on another response or on an EMS standby. But we are getting there quickly. And then some of the higher numbers, we've really drastically gotten them down. That's just error on not hitting the button to say you're at the scene, you pull up to a structure fire, you've got a lot going on, you're doing a size up, you sometimes forget, hit the button and that's what chooses a little bit higher numbers. But our, our units get out the door quickly, we respond quickly and there's, there's really no delay on our part. Turnout time is the final slide here. And that's just, the turnout time is the time we're getting alerted for it until the time we respond. And you can see the highest bars are showing a 20 to 32nd turnout time. And then finally, I just wanted to just go through just a couple of things and I'll be quick about these, just some initiatives and take the opportunity, which Chief Wallace continues to support operationally, to make the department better. I mentioned a few in, in our slide deck presentation, but we're currently looking at a policy for Class 8 foam. That's an extinguishing agent for structure fires. It's about five times more efficient than just putting water on a fire. It's a good tool for the incident commander to use on our code X-ray and vacant fires where there is collapse, fire underneath the stuff that's collapsed. It takes a lot of water, a lot of assets, it takes a lot of time and it sometimes can be real challenging. And this is one tool that we can have in our tool chest to not only fight the fire, to suppress it and to reduce water damage for other structures, you know, in the block that might be occupied. So, we're looking into that. We continue to do the first, fifth person ride-along after fire academy training, which is extremely beneficial, beneficial for our members. Our fifth person ride-alongs are conducted, five on the engine, five on the truck right after they get done the fire academy. After that process, a QR code is given to the officer and the member, they evaluate themselves and it's a loop around service. themselves and it's a loop around service for our fire academy to identify any deficiencies or, or things that they're very proficient in to circle back to the fire academy for additional training. And also it provides a really good, smooth transition in the field. The members aren't just getting thrown into a spot, brand new, they get a little bit of transition time and it's really well received. And I, I wanted to thank Chief Wallace for continuing that program. Chief Sawyer is here today. We continue to do active shooter and rescue task force training. We do both practical and classroom training. It allows us to prepare for and mitigate any active shooter incidents. And then we, we are circling with colleges, educational institutions, and we just recently got a, a new training facility for that at 311 West Saratoga Street. Battalion tech program, this is the last one I'm going to talk about and this is very important. And this is something where we've been doing for some time now. And what it is, is a battalion tech, as you know, is assigned to battalion chief and it's in compliance with NFP 1710. It's imperative that we reduce task saturation for our incident commanders and emergency management. And a majority of our firefighter line of deaths throughout the country mention this as like a top recommendation to have if it's not already implemented. The battalion tech allows for better incident management and accountability on our fire ground. They're responsible for developing a plan to get to the, to the address, tracking the best route. And then while they're driving, the battalion chief can develop an instant action plan, direct units to the best access and gather that data from an MDT. We're gathering a lot of data on MDTs about what's vacant, what has CODex ray, where our hydrants are. And it really allows the incident commander to engage in that while they're responding. We've recently made them responsible, the battalion tech as an accountability officer, to track personnel, not only the people, where they are and the functions that they're doing. And they, they manage the fire ground incident command board, which is, is, is very good. They manage it so they can compare, if I hand it off to you, you had the same knowledge of what I'm, I'm doing on this command board to every level. It's extremely important. I'm hopeful that Chief Wallace is successful in gaining the financial support that we need to keep the program going. And just in closing, our members, they work extremely hard at performing their required duties and conducting this training and responses and the community engagement. Again, I'd like to thank you as a public safety committee, the city management and for the support of our department in the operations. If you don't have any questions, thank you.
Good afternoon, Deputy Chief Ronald J. Hudgens Jr. I want to discuss what our responsibilities are out of the fire marshal office. For fiscal year 24 activities, in the fiscal year 25 activities, we have four main categories. First fire inspections, we've increased our inspections 66%. Our plan reviews have gone up 21%. Fire safety talks and fire drills have gone up 378%. And our fire investigations are down 17%. We also in fire investigation, we work side by side with Baltimore police. We have weekly meetings, we discuss evidence, call volume, whatever the process we're in the middle of for each fire investigation, which actually today we're on Keswick Avenue, active. We're also working with ATF and the state fire marshal on that. Other duties that we get involved with is through fire prevention. We have a new program that was renamed to the Junior Fire Education and Safety Program. We speak with the youth. We also go out to our senior centers, talk to those folks about special programs. One would be our, our hard of hearing and deaf smoke detectors. We've been successful with that and overall our numbers are really good this quarter. So any questions?
Good afternoon, Deputy Chief Carl D. Knight III, Office of Safety and Risk Management. So this slide is for our line of duty fire ground injuries. As you can see, the comparison from fiscal year, first quarter fiscal year 24 to 25, we're down 58.8%. This is also a direct correlation with what Chief I was saying as far as the number of actual fires have gone down, so as the, with the initiatives that both operations and Chief Wallace has put in place to ensure that our members are safe, are doing things safely. And as you can see, our injuries have gone down. Next.
Just to clarify, your, your, your belief is that this 58%, 59% reduction is a mixture of the reduction in calls for service, fires and the training?
It's, it's a combination of both, yes. Yeah, the initiatives that have been put in place as far as the, the actual policies and procedures that operations are implementing, the CODex as far as our policies, as far as CODex and vacant buildings, and then just the messages, the self, the safety message that is being pushed out by operations along with the fewer fires, then yes, that is, it's a combination of, of all this, a holistic, it's not one, one step approach, it's a holistic approach.
Good. Councilman, I'm actually going to add to that if I could. We, we were able to get that second safety officer per shift. So now we have better fire ground coverage. Our safety officers are now also charged with doing a complete 360 around the building as in addition to the incident commanders. So now they have a complete 360 and they actually acknowledge that on the radio. If they have any concerns, it could be, you know, fire impingement on service lines, you know, the threat of lateral spread or imminent collapse, they call that out. So we, we've put multiple responsibility or responsible people on these incidents to continuously evaluate the incident scene. The final thing I'll say that, that I'll give credit to here as well is that we've, we've changed the way we train. We, we, our department that will always focus on the mission, but we have put more emphasis on, on our personnel as well. And we're teaching a lot of classes, I think you can surmise it all by saying, critical thinking. And Chief Shiloh's put a lot of classes through. We've been able to secure a lot of grant money. In addition to everything that, that Chief Knight said, we've just taken a, just a holistic approach. Anywhere we can improve on member safety, that's been made a priority. And I think cumulatively, that's reflected in that, in that, that reduction there of almost 59%.
Yeah, this is a very significant reduction. It's great news. Glad to see this significant drop. I think what I'm seeing here, just looking at the numbers, is we don't have any injuries from vacancies. That is probably the most significant drop there. That, you know, seven that we had last time, we've got zero this time around and that, that says a lot to me. I know we've had a number of conversations in this committee about vacancies and the risks that come with fighting fires and entering vacancies, but no, this is encouraging. So yeah, yeah, good to see.
That also has a tie into what Chief I just briefed on with regard to Class A foam. So that, that's a foam that we can put into a building, it makes water a lot more slippery, essentially, I mean, you know, just simply put. And in, in places where we may have deep seated fires, either deep seated trash in basements or collapses, right? Instead of trying to get in there and, and mitigate that lateral spread, we dump this foam in. And if we get better penetration down deeper, we've really solved a lot of problems. So the tie in to a lot of what the, the suppression side and safety briefs on, the tie in is all around that risk reduction.
That's great.
Yes. So now this slide is piggybacking on what we were just talking about with that holistic approach. Not only have our fire ground line of duty injuries decreased, but so have our overall line of duty injuries. That we're starting to actually show them, a decrease in them as well. So this is just a comparison for the last three fiscal years. As you can see, from 2022 to 2023, we had a nine and a half percent decrease. And then from 23 to 24, we had a 3.9% decrease. And this is actually the first time in probably in a long time that we've actually been under 300 total injuries for a fiscal year. And that's just that holistic approach that we're, that the department is looking into.
Good afternoon, I am Chief Administrative Officer, Dr. Shante Hart. Looking at the agency from a human resources point of view, you see here a list of our recent hires. I think it's important to note that while we had 13 hires for 911 operators, we now have 10 active. We'll have three new hires beginning on the 21st of this month and we've also reposted that position. So as of October 8th, it opened again and we've asked DHR to extend that opening to make sure we maximize the, the applications that we receive. The emergency services instructor, we now have three, which that area is fully staffed. We had eight fire dispatchers to begin training. However, we're, we actively have seven who have entered the floor just last week, as a matter of fact. So now they're actually on the fire dispatch floor. We're, we're really excited about that because of those vacancies in that dispatch area there. So we're, we're really happy that we have those seven out there on the floor. EMT firefighters, as of September 11th, we actually had 61 to begin. We actively have 54. Next slide. Pending hires, we have a class of 11 EMT firefighter incumbents that will begin on October 23rd. We have a start date of November 20th for 26 EMTs. As a stated, we have three 911 operators who will begin on the 21st. Our government affairs, Director of Government Affairs will begin on the 23rd. We're currently reviewing resumes and conducting phone screenings for an HR generalist too. I think one of the, something that we're working on, and I think in initiative that has come up in a plan that we have, and, and I appreciate Chief Wallace for starting this. I think a lot of times when people think of the agency, you think of sworn members or people who are in uniforms and responding as you have a need. However, there's a business side of the agency that would benefit from, as people think of them civilian, but we like to call them professional staff. So we're taking the time now to look through every aspect or every area within the agency to identify areas where we can actually place professional staff or civilian in those areas. We're also looking at areas where we may currently have someone who's sworn and taking a look at where we can better use them and then maybe reclassifying some positions for professional staff. We're just taking a look at how we can maximize the functionality of the business side and what works best in business. And we're identifying areas where we can do that with professional staff.
Quick question. This is good to see, do, do we have a sense of the, the net attrition, maybe for the year or even for the quarter? The net attrition, how many people we've hired versus people who have retired or left for other reasons?
I do not, but we can definitely, we can definitely provide that. That's not a problem at all.
Yeah, it'd be helpful because I know, you know, it's, it's sort of a race against time of sorts. We're always trying to hire more quickly than we lose folks and that's sort of our, our trouble broadly, I think, not just for the department, but really for the city.
Right.
And I think to your point as well, I think one, finding opportunities to civilianize is, is a great opportunity for us so that we can have as many sworn members doing the work that only sworn members can do as possible. But I also think there's maybe, possibly, and this is a theory, a lot of inefficiencies that we may observe because we haven't filled certain civilian positions that just helped the system work well. And it's just a theory or maybe hypothesis.
Absolutely.
But just to think about those pieces where gaps in our civilian staff mean that paperwork doesn't move along as quickly as it should, or people don't get hired as quickly or whatever.
Absolutely.
So just a thought.
Absolutely. Next slide. Oh, yeah. So we're working, we're really ramping up our recruitment activities and our recruitment efforts. You can see the listing here of the, the activities that we've had. And one thing that we're doing now is that we're partnering with BPD. So we have, of this list that you see here, 11 of these overall activities have been working in conjunction with BPD and attending these events with BPD. Of the events you see here, we're also working hard to make sure that we target military, we target veterans. So we're really being intentional with that now. And as you can see, we've already had two events where we, we've gone to those job fairs and, and we've shown up there. We have four events that were strictly recruitment with BPD, but then we also attended these programs in high schools where we could speak with seniors that are in high school now about opportunities that we've had, that we have and that we're currently working to fill. I'm going to let our Director of Communications, John Marsh, go a little farther into our recruitment efforts. We have some, some great things happening and I'd like for him to show you and to share what we're doing to ramp up our recruitment efforts.
Thank you. Good afternoon, my name is John Marsh, the new PIO. It was a pleasure meeting you yesterday under those circumstances, but yeah, we did spend a lot of time together. On my first day, I was, it was requested that I do a video series for recruitment, just a small order. So we are currently producing a video series following recruits through the process. So recruiters can see exactly like what, what the process is like and what the academy is like. We did a first, what I would call a sizzle reel or a little video that we wanted to share with you guys exactly kicking off the video series that we'll be having throughout
Are you ready to make a lasting impact in your community and be part of something bigger? The Baltimore City Fire Department is looking for driven, courageous individuals who are ready to step up and serve. As a firefighter ENT, you won't just be responding to emergencies, you'll be saving lives, protecting homes and standing as a guardian for the people of Baltimore. We offer world-class training to prepare you for any challenge that comes your way, along with the opportunity for growth within the department. But this isn't just a job, it's a calling. You'll be joining a family of brave men and women who've dedicated themselves to protecting the city. If you've got the passion, the strength and the desire to serve, we want you on our team. Are you ready to answer the call? Join the Baltimore City Fire Department today.
That's just a, a small, again, intro video of what we'll be doing. We'll be following certain recruits or recruits throughout the process. The next slide is more of what I wanted to talk about is with the QR codes. So we have a dedicated team of recruiters, but what you're really looking at in this room is our other team of recruiters. And leveraging something like this throughout, when we're either on site or when we're out in the public, having a QR code that gets an immediate engagement, we then can compile a list of emails and then keep engaging with that recrutee while they're waiting to be part of the next class. So our process is keeping with outreach with, we wanted to do updates, videos, tips and success stories. So they can keep being engaged by us before we have a new class. So we don't have that attrition like we want to, they have that immediate, what I call buyers, like, oh, I want to be in part of that. And then there's a bit of a waiting period. So what we wanted to do was close that gap and keep engaged, that recrutee engaged while we're waiting to fill the next class. We'll be doing more outreach again with QR codes and we'll have QR codes actually on
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Councilwoman Ramos, Deputy Chief Laura Shiloh, Director of Training. This, you can go, this is just an overview of some of the, the activities that are being conducted by the recruits. All of these, these slides here are all recruits there. You can go to the next one. This outlines what our current numbers are as far as the recruit classes, 2401. 2401B, that has 24 members in there right now. They're finishing up their training with a graduation date projected for November the 15th. We also have a class of eight EMS providers that finished early. We're going to bring them back and include them in that ceremony so that they also are recognized. Recruit class 2404, as Chief Hart stated, we started with 61. That was broken into two groups. The A and B group, one group has EMT already, they came in with that certification, the second one needs it. So the first group with the certification, we have 20 members. The B group is 34. The A group should be graduating February of '25, and the B group, we're expecting June of 2025. Next Wednesday, we'll be bringing incumbent members, 11, they're EMS providers currently, who want to go over into the fire suppression side. So they'll come to the academy, we'll give them additional fire training, and they should leave the academy in January. And then we're also expecting another EMS class, November the 20th. Hopefully, it'll be '26, and they would graduate in March of '25. So this just outlines some of our hours that we provide, FY '24 versus '25. When you look at the numbers, I know there's a, there's a big difference. In '24, we had five classes that were all running at the same time, they were all concurrent. '25, FY '25, we only have four. However, one of them, one group graduated in August, and the other one just started November the 11th. So that's, that's the big disparity in that, those two numbers. Can go to the next one. This just outlines the daily operational field training that we provide, as Chief I'd mentioned. In addition to all the activities that they're, that they do with their inspections and everything else, they also come out to the Fire Academy, and it's, it's limited to a small number. The Thursday Engine Operations Class, that's a newly developed class, and that's expected to kick off the end of the month. Go to the next one. So this is just numbers comparing quarters with the total hours that are delivered to the field. So we're pretty consistent with that, even though the topics change. It's only a difference of 10 hours from quarter last year to this year. Go to the next one. So as I, I usually mention, these are some newly implemented training that are based off of needs that have come up. I wanted to touch on the second one, the focus, which is the Fire Officer Command Simulations. That is done once a week where each battalion chiefs and, and captains, as well as EMS officers are brought out, they run through scenarios and make them more proficient in incident command. We also expanded that a little bit. We've been training the individual battalion chiefs because it is a web-based program so that they can, from their office, engage with the units in their battalion and keep them in their district. They can run simulations from their office. So we have half of the battalion chiefs that are trained in that, and we're working to get everybody trained. It's, it's been pretty positive feedback with that. You can go to the next one. So that as well is an outline of other responsibilities that the Fire Academy is responsible for that ties up our normal instructor personnel. But it's field support that, that's required. Go to the next one. These are just additional courses, the top group, the instructor and officer classes that's required for promotional opportunities. We have to provide those. They all are in progress right now. We'll offer all of them again coming up in January. The newly developed grant-funded classes on the bottom, I wanted to touch on the firefighter removal class. That was, that was developed pretty soon after Stricker Street to train our members how to better remove trapped victims. I got some feedback today from some of the members who were there yesterday, having to operate in those conditions. So this class isn't only beneficial for us to remove firefighters, but as well as civilians. And it, it trains them to operate in a much safer way in those type of environments that are, that are pretty dangerous conditions. It's been really well received. The word's gotten out, we've had, Baltimore County has come to just watch what we do. They've developed their own class based on what we, we've done. They've actually just gotten their first class off the ground. We've had Annapolis come view it, DC, Milwaukee, and then Boston's coming up. We're, we're having another class next week. It's a four-day class. And Sacramento, they've also expressed some interest in flying out and just watching the class. The guys that put that together were very invested in that incident, and they do a phenomenal job. Go to the next one. These are just extra responsibilities that the staff there work on with training manual updates. They've added QR codes to that, training bulletins. We also put out, it's called a training days, once a month, that's informational, and a lot of the information that we get are from members in the field that come across certain situations or incidents that we'll publish. We continually do research and development, and we design and build our own props. Go to the next one. So this. Should go to the next one? Sorry. This just compares the number of hours. FY '24, quarter one, we had 235 hours dedicated to these additional activities. And then this year, we've only had 149. So this is a new slide that outlines grant funding. I know I've mentioned it a lot. This just goes through the three grants that we've, we've used in the last five years. So the, the grant funding offsets the overtime. So it also keeps our units in service. They come on their own time, they're paid overtime for it. So it also helps with our budget, keeping that overtime spending low. I don't think that we're always getting reimbursed for it, but I, I know the city is benefiting from that. We just got notification of the next grant for the Assistance of Firefighters for FY ' '23, and that's all overtime and backfill reimbursement. So that was 1.8 million. This just outlines the spending. It looks like it's a very low number, which it actually is. That particular quarter covers your summertime months. So because these classes are pretty intense, we back them off in the summer when it's really hot. So your next quarters, you're going to see them spike up pretty significantly. If you have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I am so glad that there's all these, you know, additional classes that people can take, and it's great that, you know, we're getting feedback from around the country that this is great. Hopefully, they're paying us for our time. But my question was on the recruitment and my, when we first started our term, there was a lot of discussion around the list, right, of people that come in, say they want to be a firefighter or EMS. And we didn't end up taking very many people from that entire list. And some of it was just the, the rigor of the situation, but also just the testing that was needed and all of that. Are we seeing a different trend now? Are people ready? Are we changing the way we're doing things so that more people are ready? I mean, it seems the recruiting classes, it's more than we had three years ago, for sure. I mean, I think we had this huge list, one time we had this hearing, we had a huge list of people, and it was 11 in the class, like, that was bananas. But now we're seeing more people graduating and getting through, which I think is great. I think it says a lot about our recruiting, but also just how we're, how we're helping people to be successful. So can you talk a little bit about that? Are we seeing a lot of the same, I mean, not the same numbers of applicants? Are we seeing less? You're obviously going to put a big campaign together to get more. So I'm just curious about that, that list, if we're using the same kind of system, that kind of thing.
So with the training and the classes that we provide, EMT is a huge one. And as I know, we've said in the past, it's college-level classes. So we're bound by University of Maryland or MIFRE that we can only allow them to retest modules one time. And if they retest it once and fail it, they have to take the whole entire course over, which is not, that, that's not something that we can provide, not then, anyway. We have about 20 to 25% of the recruits that come in do not graduate for various reasons. We've had some that have been injured off the job. And if they meet, if they miss a week of training, it's very difficult to make it up. That's a small number. We've had people resign because they realize it's just not something that they want to do. And the academics, we've also had urinalysis issues with positive testing. So between 20 and 25%, we, we do spend extra time if there's a failure of an initial test. The instructors will work with them in the morning, in the afternoon. They, they always come in very early, so we've afforded that to, to people who are struggling. So we're doing everything that we can to, to make them successful.
So I can speak to the, the front end of that with regard to recruitment. They, they just spoke about the QR codes that we have now. That's going to go on, on all apparatus. I myself am an example of just driving around the city and just hanging it out the window. And we've had people, we've only had this program up and running on a very, very limited basis now for about two and a half weeks. We've got 112 people that we've already captured just by way of limited access to QR codes. Once that hits the apparatus, once it hits the medic units, the suppression units, any community engagement that they do is automatically a recruitment event for us. So, you know, we're going to really expand that out. Finally, you've heard us talk about changing the way we test and we bring people in. Tomorrow is our kickoff meeting with NTN. So we already have, we're way ahead of NTN. We've already started to build our own database, right, of people that are interested inside of the city. So there'll be a questionnaire and some things that we, as a department, have to fill out so that they could develop a profile for a written test, right? They're going to actually develop a test that's kind of city of Baltimore-centric, if you will. But once that's out there and we get that testing done, I've spoken about the backend compression. CPAT and oral interview on the same day. When they're done that, they get their PSI appointment that day if they successfully pass. And then they, you know, they move through PSI, background check, and they're ready to go. So we believe we're in a position right now that we have the recruitment piece finally sewn up, that when the current list we're working off ends, we're going to be able to transition right into a new one. Perfect world, we're able to combine them, and there's, there's not a gap. So I'm, I'm very excited about the work they've done. I think they put the Fire Department in a position that we've not been in in a long time. Our historical way of testing was just kind of advertising it, show up at the convention center. Back in the early 90s, 3, 4, 5,000 people easily. This last test that we gave, I think we had around 11 or 1,200 people that, that actually showed up. And then, you know, you're, you're losing them right away. And the, the list we're working off now, if I recall right, is only about 350 candidates deep. That, you know, we're, we're all, it's, it's a, it's a candidate market right now, right? They can go kind of wherever they want to go because we're all looking for that same help. So we need to be more competitive. I think we are now. I'm, I'm very optimistic about where we'll be this time next year.
Thank you. Yeah, I think part of the, the challenge three years ago was also that response piece, right? Somebody would take a test, and they wouldn't hear from, and then they would be off doing another job. So it sounds like you're tightening up sort of everything, from application to testing to, you know? And that, I think, is going to help us a lot in terms of capturing folks, being competitive so that we're not losing folks to other places. So that, that's, I mean, we've really made a lot of progress on that particular front. I remember our colleague really hammering on that, Councilwoman Burnett, when we first came in. So I know he'd been working on this a lot prior to our coming in. So, so that's great. I think that's great. Thank you.
Yeah, I was going to tag off two pieces. So first, one was we were beating the list to a pulp last time. And so I, I'm curious if we have gone to a new list, or, you know, is that something that we're able to do this time around? Or are we still recycling our list?
So we're still working off the same list. Historically, those, they, they've been two-year lists. Of course, as they get smaller, the challenge is, right? We, we need to spin up another list. The other thing I, I, I think that we've, we've really put a lot of focus on, or two items, I would say. One, with the new HR director and, and some things that Chief White's working on, we're going to stay in contact with candidates. You may be, you know, 200 or 300 down the list, but we're going to continue, hey, look, the list is still here, you're still on it, we're going to work our way down towards you. I, I think that's, that's probably one of the biggest things that we just missed an opportunity to do, right, as a department. We're going to fix that. The other thing is, we're, we're also hiring lateral entry EMTs. We're, we're, we're going to move towards being able to teach our own paramedics, right? We had that accreditation a while back. Chief Matts is working on getting that back. We're likely a year away from that, but we're in discussions to be able to do that. So we need to go out and grab the people that are already trained and attract them here. We've started doing that with EMTs. We're in some talks right now internally about doing that with other, other firefighters that are out there. All options when it comes to any level of training, or even those that have no training, are on the table. And I know that the HR team is actively exploring recruitment in, in all those areas.
Yeah. I think one of the things I learned about, and I've seen this of, not just with the Fire Department, but I think you guys have, you guys in the Police Department have just more robust systems, is that our ability to turn around these lists and get to people as quickly as possible is often the greatest indicator of how large our class size is. The more quickly we can turn around folks who've applied and get them tested and get them into whatever process happens thereafter, the more likely we are to get that person to start with us. If it takes a long time, let's say someone applies, and it takes nine months before they hear back from us, the odds are not very good because they've likely found another job. I mean, they had to eat somewhere. And, you know, so I think that's the piece for us, making sure that we can respond as quickly as possible. It's really good to hear that we're trying to keep people engaged and let them know that they're still being considered within the process. But that turnaround time is going to be really, really important. The, the other thing that I had on my mind, and this was a bill that we worked on my first year, and it was sponsored by Councilwoman Burnett, was the Cadet Program. I'm really curious how that's going, what interest we're getting with folks in the program, how many folks are in the program, and if we've seen any progression from the Cadet Program to any higher-level service within program to any higher-level service within the department.
I'll ask Dr. Hart to, she's rebuilding the program, and I think she's moving in the right direction, but I'll ask her to elaborate on that.
Okay.
Yes, so we have totally just started from scratch to create a new program. We've built a team within our agency. We're working along with BPD and looking at their cadet program. But what we've done is we've started recently with one of the high schools that has that CTE program, and that's Dunbar, because they have actually an instructor there, licensed instructor, certified instructor there. So we started looking at that program there to see what we had, and we looked at the other CTE programs. So whereas we intend on this working citywide, we're going to start there because that's already in place, and we're going to grow from there. So we've had those meetings, we've met, we've met with the schools, we've met with administrators. What we're doing is this year, because of the timeframe, we're going to start with 11th grade, I mean, 12th grade. And from there, we'll work with them to get them into the agency. As Chief Shiloh talked about, the academic rigor, the problems with the EMT and with them being able to pass these courses and things, we've started working along, creating something so that we work along with them now, so that when they're ready to make that transition, it will not be as difficult. The plan after this time, starting with 12th grade, is to back it up to 11th grade. We'll eventually open it up from 10th, 11th, and 12th grade. We like to start speaking to them in middle school, to just introduce them to the program, let them know what this agency is all about. So we're going to start with middle school, but right now, we're working with 12th grade. We're just getting started with that. We have a plan together, we have our framework, and we're starting with the CTE programs.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I I think when we passed, I remember this was oddly a contentious one because I know we were worried about the ability for the department to navigate this program with young young kids, frankly, who there's a maturity gap, there's a skills gap. I think the concept in passing the bill, I think, for this committee and eventually the council, was that we wanted to create that pipeline. And I'm really curious if we've done an analysis of the weak points in the pipeline and reasons why it isn't working, and if there are things that we should consider in light of that, that we can consider changing, or can help us make any shift or changes? Because ultimately, we need people. And we we see our applications dropping precipitously. We know that's not going to change overnight. And so, you know, as much as we can sort of feed the pipeline with young people who are still young, impressionable, and able to meet our standards, as opposed to someone who may be a little bit further down the line and maybe not as flexible and able, we have that opportunity in this program. I'm not sure what it takes to make it run on all cylinders yet, but I would love if we have that sort of deep dive. I don't know if there's a memo or like a one-pager that gives us some of the weak points that we've seen in the last two years or so, since we've attempted to to stand up the program. I think that would be helpful, not only for the for the committee, and, you know, we passed this bill out of committee, but also, I think, instructive for the department and thinking about what we can do to improve that pipeline component.
We've actually done that. We've started with that. We created an entire framework. So what we did, and we actually had that presentation, and I happily share that with you. We started with the framework, everything that we need to see, what we'd like the end goal to be. And we also did a deep dive into the barriers. We had Chief Shiloh's area as well as anyone else who, we even went back to some individuals who are in our agency, who are officers now, who went through the cadet program at one point in time. So we went to all aspects. We built an entire presentation on the framework. We built a couple of slides of the barriers, and then we went through each one of those barriers to address them, to see what we can do to not have that occur again. So we have definitely done that, and we do have that available. I can provide it to you.
Yeah, I would start there. If we can, if you could share that with the committee, that would be really, really helpful for us to think about, you know, how else we can be helpful in addressing the staffing needs for the department. With that, I want to make sure we move along. Anything else we need to tackle before we get to EMS? Chief Matt?
I know you can't wait to get to EMS.
Yeah.
Chairman Conway, Councilman Maramos, thank you for taking the time to see us. For the record, my name is Assistant Chief James Matts. I'm chief EMS. Today's a little bit different. I'm joined, Dr. Launer couldn't be here today. We're joined by one of our other medical directors. Dr. Daniel Gingold will be helping today, speaking on behalf of the medical directors. And then Deputy Chief Timothy Collin will talk about some of our population health outreach stuff that I know you're very familiar with. The other thing that I wanted to talk to you about is a lot of these slides are going to look like they're duplicates. It's amazing, year over year, quarter to quarter, there's very little difference, and I'll just point out the changes so we can get through the slides. Anyhow, the first slide is actually a side-by-side representation of our top five ALS and BLS calls for service. The numbers are very relative, as well as the types of calls we go to. The year-over-year, our most common ALS types of calls are breathing problems, unknown or sick, you know, difficulty breathing. On the BLS side of things, it's also the three most common types of calls we have are sick, vehicle accidents, and they'll say sick unwell. But the it's really nominal changes, I just wanted to point out. It's been pretty level, so in terms from a statistics side. These are our community metrics, dashboards. We have multiple dashboards. The thing that's really nice to point out, I guess, from a perspective of FY '25 versus '24, we actually did 38,000 incidents and 69,000 incidents in the same quarters of both years. The only difference is that there's been a dramatic reduction in the amount of responses to overdoses. We're going to expand on that very heavily later, and I know you're going to anticipate that as well. In terms of our incidents, responses, and transports, remember, there's a unique incident on every call. Responses, there can be more than one unit on an individual incident, so you could have up to four units per se for a cardiac arrest. And then, of course, transports. But over these two quarters, we actually did 38,000 incidents, 69,000 responses, and the transports were actually level at 22,000 transports each quarter. The only difference was the response time to sensitive calls. There was a slight increase at .2 minutes over those year-over-year numbers, but it's pretty nominal. I just wanted to point out those for you. The next two times are the suppression wait times. There has been a slight increase year-over-year, but to be honest, those those numbers are relatively level. The increase on the median time for suppression wait was just a minute change from year-over-year. Offload, everybody wants to talk about offload, offload, offload. We're going to talk about the mitigation strategies for offload pretty heavily coming forward. It's just to point out that over the quarter one of FY '24 and quarter one of FY '25, there was roughly a two-minute increase in both our 90% and our median times. We're going to talk about some of the mitigation strategies, but one of the things that I always like to point out, and I think this is an important thing we pointed out last time we reported, our median time of our overall unit scene time is really 16 minutes. Our hospital time in that same period is 50 minutes. Hospital offload is a huge problem, and that's one of the main factors we've been working with for years. It was really terrible during the pandemic. It's getting much better now, but there's still some significant work we can do in those areas. Two of the other dashboards that we do track, and in a minute, I'm going to transition over to Dr. Gingold, is the alternate destinations. There's a whole list of things we can do to mitigate our delays and responses and offloads. EMS alternative destination is one of those. That's like the stabilization center, things like that. When we went into the stabilization center, the idea was we would take more people to the stabilizations, and they would call us for. Unfortunately, we track it very closely. It's completely opposite. We take a lot less people there than they call us for. There's a wide variety of reasons, but it's a small piece or a small tool in our toolbox for that.
Dr. Gingold?
Thank you, Chief Matts. Thanks, thank you, Mr. Chairman and Madam Councilwoman for having me.
One question, forgive me, the stabilization center. Oh, for overdoses, got it. Thank you. Go ahead.
Yeah, my name's Dan Gingold. I'm a deputy medical director for population health, and I'll be reporting on behalf of Dr. Launer and the medical director group. So as Chief mentioned, we have several mitigation strategies to help offload our very busy ambulance service. First one is TEL-911. I'll give a few more details for that in a minute, but that was, went live in April 2024, now operational. We are looking forward to starting our nurse triage line. Believe that has gone through some of the financial speed bumps, and the plan for that is contract with a third-party system, Global Medical Response, that runs this successfully in some other jurisdictions to help move low-acuity complaints out of EMS transport via ambulance to hospitals and direct calls to care appropriate for condition and acuity. We'll also continue to work on dispatch reform to identify low-acuity call types to get either to our new nurse navigation line or divert to behavioral health resources. We're continuing our contracted ambulances program involving third-party BLS ambulance services, target those for low-acuity also to offload our ALS units. And we're also, as Chief mentioned, have multiple alternative destination programs. Those are continuing but do have relatively low volumes due to complexity of patients. We're hoping this improves with our nurse triage line, and we're also not included in those prior alternative destination metrics was those for our mobile integration, mobile integrated health program, which also takes patients out of the acute response and can divert them to urgent care or other resources. Next slide, please, Chief.
Sure, I'm just going to inject one thing. The nurse triage line, we've been working on that for well over a year to get that in line. The real key with the nurse triage line, those calls never get to us responding to those houses. That's why that's so key. We're using a DC model where what happens is you call 911. If it's the right type of a call determined, a low priority, they're farmed off, and then, and that's one of the slow things. That's what I mean by a lot of different tools we're trying to do to assist with that.
We've started or continuing conversations with a wide range of stakeholders across the city for ARPA-H and B Corp collaboration. This is focusing on reducing 911 response for overdose-related complaint, for opioid overdose.
Quick question. I know one of the things we were looking at was the Lyft Uber concept. Is that captured in the select mitigation strategies?
No, it's excellent question. It's one of the things we're discussing with that nursing, nurse navigation, nursing and 911 center. In terms of Uber and Lyft, it's also some of the discussion they've been talking centered around some of the ARPA-H, like Dr. Gingold's talking about, as well as some of our future outlook about trying to link some of our opioid response with some of those things. That's one of the things down the road we haven't quite got to.
Got it. Thank you.
Yeah, and Chief Collin, they talk about this, but the MIH program is able to use Uber and Lyft because the 911 response has ended. There's been problems with state Medicaid having replacement of emergent transport with Lyft, and so we're working through that. The ARPA-H program, as Chief was mentioning, so the goal for this is to address opioid overdoses and opioid use disorder. We've had broad conversations with stakeholders from academic medical centers, hospitals, the public health department, as well as various other city agencies, to develop a connected referral network for care for substance use disorder and opioid use disorder. That's going to continue. We feel strongly that BCFD needs to have their efforts funded and are pretty confident we'll be able to make that happen, but it's ongoing. For our TEL-911, I mentioned this went live in April 2024. This is using telemedicine in the field from point-of-care with the paramedic calling to contracted with a third party that provides emergency physicians to try to treat the patient in place and obviate hospital transport. We've had a couple hundred successful calls since the program went live, around 60 per month, although the last one or two months, there's been some technical difficulties that have actually reduced calls over those couple of months. But still, the program is fairly successful. On the next slide, that shows that two-thirds of the time when contacted, we're able to treat the patient in place and not requiring hospital transport. So that both helps our ambulance units not have to spend time transporting, especially not have to spend time waiting at the hospital for offload, and can reduce our ED volumes at our partner hospitals as well. Yeah, so just as I said, some problems with IT, and we're continuing to work through those. Our buprenorphine program is live. We completed training in July, and the program just went live on 9:30, allowing our population health team to administer buprenorphine in the field for acute opioid withdrawal. We haven't had any administrations yet. They're looking out for them. The caution on this is, given experience in other jurisdictions, we do expect the volumes to be relatively small. It's challenging to find appropriate patients that, you know, have the right amount of withdrawal and don't have other comorbid medical problems or psychiatric problems that require hospital transport. But we're really using this as an opportunity to improve our ability to link patients directly to care with or without buprenorphine, including supporting other city institutions, especially VHSB and 988 for developing a telemedicine medication for opioid use disorder treatment line.
I got a question here. How often do we administer naloxone?
Naloxone? Oh, man. I don't know. Many, many times daily.
So one of the things with the buprenorphine program that I want us to consider, and this is something we can, it's a long list of suggestions I'll be sending to the administration here, is in instances where we administer naloxone, we offer buprenorphine. And so while folks may not come to us looking to get buprenorphine, in an instance where we have administered naloxone, they are automatically going to go into withdrawal, and buprenorphine would help them immediately. So I, in my conversation with Dr. Launer, he explained that we don't, in surrounding counties that are now using buprenorphine, they're not seeing the engagement that they'd like, but I think it may be a problem of the the starting point. And the starting point for us, I believe, should be anytime someone has been, they've had naloxone administered, we should automatically offer buprenorphine if they're coming out of withdrawal. So, excuse me, not if they're coming out of withdrawal, if they are in withdrawal, we know the cause of that withdrawal, we know would help in that instance. And then I think the immediate step thereafter should be, where do they go to continue their treatment? Should they want to continue their treatment? So, yeah, I think, you know, not having anybody use the buprenorphine thus far is probably a matter not of there are not opportunities to administer it. If we're giving a lot of naloxone, theoretically, we could be giving a lot of buprenorphine out as well.
Sorry, Mr. Chair, isn't it a state regulatory issue relative to the access to buprenorphine? Isn't that correct? It's just that the state was not allowing for...
Yeah, the patients have to meet certain criteria in order to be able to give it. Dr. Gingold could speak a lot more. They actually have to be in a certain degree of withdrawal, not a massive withdrawal, not a little bit of withdrawal. There's a whole bunch of boxes that have to be checked, especially from an EMS standpoint. We limit that because there's a lot of different oversight that we have to follow through MEMS. Dr. Gingold, you probably can...
Yeah, I mean, the MEMS protocol, we're following pretty closely. Just to be clear, that under our protocol and the MEMS protocol, patients who have received naloxone and are in naloxone precipitate withdrawal are eligible for buprenorphine. So we are able to give it in that case. I think the issue is, I'm sure you experienced this on the ride-along, you know, many patients who receive naloxone for overdose then sort of leave the scene and aren't interested for engaging. And we also don't yet have buprenorphine on all of the ambulances. It's only on our population health fans. So we're limited to the time when they're able to get to the scene to offer that. So we're going to continue to work on that. I think you're right that that's an opportunity for engagement. So, yeah, that's what we're...
Yeah, that's that's another one of my sort of desires, that we would have the ability to administer buprenorphine on every ambulance, and theoretically, fire truck as well, if we're going to be responding with suppressing units. But just a thought.
Isn't it something, though, that has to be taken as a long-term, so that there has to be some way to keep re-engaging folks?
That's optimal, but it's not necessary. I mean, anytime you take buprenorphine, you're protected from overdose for 12 hours, and cravings are reduced, withdrawal symptoms go away. It's almost always good, even if there's not long-term engagement.
So I've been dorking out on this generally. Yeah, I've talked to a number of experts in this world, and this is a best practice that we already know has been proven in other instances. It would just be a matter of kind of changing our processes and making sure that people have the proper accreditations in order to administer buprenorphine. There is a consideration at the state level that may complicate that. That is one thing I'm working with folks at the state level to talk about, and I would love to work with the administration to get the support of the mayor to do the same. But in instances like this, where someone is in withdrawal, they can make the decision to to say no to buprenorphine theoretically, but they can also make the decision to say yes, especially in an instance where your entire body hurts and you hate your life for a second. Or, so I think, as I understand, about 30 minutes to an hour after someone has received naloxone... So I think, as I understand, about 30 minutes to an hour after someone has received naloxone, they're going to be feeling the worst they've ever felt. And that is the best opportunity to give them buprenorphine and to help them with the withdrawal symptoms. So I think this is a real opportunity for us. I think the real logistics that I think we need to figure out is what training needs to happen for our paramedics to make sure that there's at least someone on each truck that has the ability to administer buprenorphine. So, once again, this is, I'm going to be annoying about this. I just, I want to let you guys know in advance, this is, I think, probably the most obvious thing that we can do as a city to make sure that more people are taking that first step into treatment. And of course, when we're responding, we're often responding to folks who are overdosing. I can't tell you how many calls I saw come in when I did my ride-along. We weren't able to make it to most of them because, you know, we were just one unit. But we have many units all over the city that are responding, so please, go ahead.
Sure. Yeah, we could move on. Sort of related, we're also working closely with the folks in 911 Dispatch and police to work on behavioral health diversion along with our behavioral health colleagues. And so this program has been going since June 2021. There's been over 300 diversions that have estimated saved 584 hours of time savings for BCFD and BPD due to avoiding response. Looking at our performance, we're continuing robust QA process on this. Still, most eligible calls that are eligible, at least by their initial call type, are not diverted, usually because when someone talks to them, it's not actually eligible for diversion, like there's a threat, acute threat of violence that requires police, or there might be acute psychiatric need that does require medical assistance. But we're working to refine determinants to better target eligible calls and working with the 911 dispatchers to make sure that co-notification to our behavioral health resources is happening when possible. It does seem like our mobile crisis team deployment from 988 and 988 calls overall are increasing. And so we're continuing to work on partnering between 911 Dispatch team and the 988 Call Center. I think their relationship is becoming much closer and much more collaborative, and so we've been getting good feedback from both sides about their partnership. We're also participating in quarterly Sentinel event meetings along with the city stakeholders from the mayor's office, from behavioral health, from police, from social services and others to improve our systemic response to citizens with complex mental health needs. We could keep going here. Finally, just a brief overview of the clinical metrics. We track national quality metrics, as do other jurisdictions in the country. We have a robust QA monitoring program of high-impact procedures, including 100% review on cardiac arrest, heart attack, ketamine administration, and advanced airway. Next slide. This is just an example. We're performing quite well with our advanced airway metrics, and we're continuing to monitor all of our other impact, high-impact procedures. One thing to improve our outcomes in cardiac arrest, which have historically been lower than some national averages, we're working on implementing CPR lifelinks program, which is in order to assist 911 dispatchers with talking through administering a bystander CPR over the phone at the time of call. This is dovetailing with some community education for trying to increase our on-scene community bystander CPR rates, and there seems to be some change in that on the next slide. We know that out-of-cropital cardiac arrest mortality rates in general track very closely with whether the arrest is witnessed and whether bystander CPR is administered, and we've seen an increase in our bystander CPR rate. This was last year's earlier numbers. I think the next slide might be the year before or just recently. We can see that here, that there's been increase in bystander CPR with an increase, associated increase in overall survival rate. I think that's all I have from the medical direction standpoint.
Deputy Chief Timothy Cullen, I'll be reviewing the next two programs, two of the programs I'm responsible for. Before we move on to the data, I just want to give you an overview of the chase car pilot program that we started, what you're seeing for the first time. On April 22, 2024, we implemented an advanced life support, or ALS, upgrade unit called ALS Support Unit 1, or ASU1. The purpose of the unit is to deliver rapid ALS emergency care to patients and upgrade BLS units when there's a need for ALS transport. The unit's operational seven days a week during the peak hours of 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. It's staffed by two paramedics, that's our highest level of care. They're housed at the Station of Engine 4, Truck 29 on Cold Spring right off the Alameda, but they do respond citywide. This is a non-transport unit. They're equipped with two full complements of medications, cardiac monitors, and patient care equipment. So that gives us the ability to have two additional ALS teams available in one unit, which can be split and deployed for multiple responses at a time. So just a kind of an example of how they function, the team responds to calls with the goal of providing the rapid ALS care until an appropriate transport unit arrives. So once they arrive on scene and start ALS care and the upgrade's initiated by one of the team members, that team member remains on the scene with their equipment, and the second ALS team member goes into service with the ability to respond to other, to another ALS incident, and then the rendezvous later at the hospital after the transport. So this model gives us versatility and the capability to increase the level of care of a BLS support unit, of a basic life support unit, by upgrading to an ALS level, as well as downgrading incidents when it's determined that ALS care is not needed and a BLS transport unit is appropriate. So on this slide here, it just provides an overview of call data. As of yesterday, in less than six months' time, as a part-time unit, they've responded to over 1,250 incidents. I'll just begin with our median response time, which is 7 minutes and 49 seconds. So it's showing that we're getting ALS care to the patient rapidly, so even though we're responding over a bigger area, we're still getting that care on scene quickly. In the other section with the top 10 calls, call types, our top three is respiratory distress, non-breathing, and unconscious. With that, the biggest area I want to highlight is our incidence by acuity level. 87.4 of the incidents they respond to are high-acuity calls. So the significance of this is that ASU1 is being utilized for the most appropriate calls the majority of the time. So what that means, we're getting ALS care to critical patients who need it. So those are our life-threatening, moderate to severely ill patients, the patients who require a higher level of treatment and care. Next slide, please. So this slide just provides an overview of responses in each district, showing again that the unit responds citywide. The other side is some internal tracking that we do. This shows how the unit's being utilized, how versatile it is through patient evaluation, redirection of assets. Not only can they upgrade to provide a higher level of care, they can also initiate care faster when waiting for an ALS transport unit to arrive, or by downgrading that call once it's recognized that ALS care is not indicated. So that keeps our ALS units available for ALS calls and allowing our BLS units to handle their most appropriate calls. And then these internal tracking numbers, they show about 63% of our calls involve some form of patient contact, with the majority of the calls being upgrades and providing ALS support and treatment. ALS care provided to transfer to another ALS support unit. Just to mention that this is when we arrive on scene before the ALS transport unit, we provide rapid ALS care first. The ALS transport unit comes, they take over care, we go back in service, and that unit transports to the hospital. And then our other column there, canceled ALS care not needed are false. That data, this reflects the versatility of the unit again. So the first arriving companies assess the patient, they determine that the call needs basic life support, cancel the ALS units, which keeps our ALS units in service, not only ALS 1, but our other ALS transport units. So the chase car model, it's showing proof of concept in our EMS system for efficient unit utilization based on the level of care needed. Any questions on the ASU upgrade? Next slide. All right, you're familiar with our population health program? Next slide, please. So this, again, it's our mobile resource, community paramedic program. Our primary goal, again, is harm reduction, reducing 911 calls by delivering resources and connecting patients to care on-site and in real time. Thank you, Councilman Conway, for riding with us and kind of witnessing what some of the outreach that we do. I don't know that you'll run there on a super busy day, but might help make more sense of some of this data. So on this, our program, we've been operational for a little over a year now. This provides some of the update on the data. I do like to highlight that the teams provided outreach to over 11,218 non-patient contacts. So we do reflect that, we do provide support to our patients, but a lot of times our patients are critically injured, are critically ill, or leave the scene, transported to the hospital. So we provide that support care to everyone else. So our non-patient contacts, that's our families, our bystanders, members of the community who were either witnesses to or directly involved in a call involving a suspected overdose, or they were in the area of a suspected substance use call. The significance of this, again, is we're getting the information and resources to the most appropriate people who can use it in the event that it ever occurs again. Next slide, please. Sorry if I'm talking fast, trying to roll through the slide because I know we're getting close to the end. Our primary response, again, is functioning as that mobile resource unit with that real-time connection to resources. This slide also reflects some of those efforts. And again, our population health awareness section, that's our on-scene, real-time, post-incident community awareness training, and where we distribute those leave-behind kits, resources, and training. Fentanyl test strips, xylazine test strips, outside agency referrals, we track total resources, a lot of what we distribute or wound care kits, a lot of our patients that we come across do need things like four-by-fours, gauze, things like that. So we do try to hand that out. There's our numbers for that. And I just wanted to mention again, our homebound vaccination program. So we do continue our efforts to support the city health department's homebound vaccination program by administering COVID vaccinations to the homebound population. We recently added flu vaccinations to our existing homebound patients. That'll start this month. That's kind of expands it. It's my understanding that through our collaboration, BCHD is the only health department in the state that continues this service post-COVID. So, next slide, please. And then, again, this is our most impactful initiative, is our leave-behind distribution. So the significance, again, of these numbers is that these kits and training on how to use them is being distributed in areas experienced either current or recent suspected opioid use. And then, again, we identify those areas through active real-time surveillance and knowing these areas by working on them on a daily basis, meaning that we're providing that life-saving medication to our suspected overdose patients, to their families or bystanders who are connected either directly or indirectly to that incident.
Sure, the question is, what is the impact on that program? This is the impact on that program in just over a year. There's an assortment of percentage decreases, incidence of responding to opioid overdose, non-fatal opioid overdoses, 47%, 32% all across the city. There's one little area where there's a slight increase, but overall, when we track that year-over-year for those same time period, there's been a 24.12% decrease in opioid non-fatal overdose. That doesn't mean that we're not, those aren't occurring, it just means we're not getting called for those. The answer at the end of the day is be able to get people, bridge them to treatment. This is a great bridge, a great Band-Aid for us to be able to go in there and help those people. We actually do a deep dive on the data in terms of our overdoses to look at. Like I said, there's a 24.12% decrease in the two quarters. The biggest decrease was in July. July to July, FY '24 to '25, there was a 38.98% decrease. That's one of the hottest months for us with overdoses, the summers. That's one of the most busy times for that. Day of the week, there's actually Thursdays, there was the biggest reduction at 35%. And then the most peak time of the day that we have our overdoses for that quarter occur between 12:00 in the afternoon and 2:00 o'clock in the afternoon. We're going to continue to monitor the data as close as we can. I would like to highlight, I think, our next quarterly stat, we're talking December. That's always a time we would like to say, hey, look what we've done this year, this is what we've done, and this is where we're going. Fire Department, I mean, I want to tout EMS, but I think every facet of the Fire Department's done great work this year. I'll be looking forward to bringing some more of that data to you again in December.
Yeah, I'm sorry to let you know, we will not be having a meeting in December. I know, I can tell you look forward every single time. You guys always come incredibly well-prepared. I want to say a couple things. One, the experience that I had right along with the population health team was really, really, really helpful, and I would encourage all my colleagues at some point to try and get out there. The work that they do, I think, is really, really important in building relationships within the community. I'll say, the Fire Department, EMS team, EMTs, and of course, the population health team, a little bit more specifically here, it's just very well-trusted. People trust folks in your uniform, and that is not, that should not be taken for granted. And there's a lot that we can do with the trust that we've built in the community, and I think the work that the population health team is doing is even further building that trust. But I think even more in your data here is really compelling for why we need to expand the program, and I had a conversation with folks on the team about that. I really hope that you guys apply to the opioid fund. I would love to see this program expand, and I would love to see some of those funds go toward expanding this effort, because I do believe that, of course, we need to do the buprenorphine, of course, we need to make sure we're tackling those components, but the proactive work that the population health team does to build those relationships and, I mean, they're going out there and they know folks, folks know them, and they know their stories, and they, over the last year and change, have been building strong relationships that helps them walk into situations with a lot of trust and a lot of back and forth. And as I think about the overdose problem, that's the most important piece. People want to feel that degree of trust. So I hope, Chief, we're looking at applying to the fund. Certainly, I understand agencies can apply, and I think this program will be case in point of exactly what we'd need. In my eyes, I feel like this is the tip of the spear when it comes to the department's response, maybe EMS, either or. But I think in getting ahead of this problem, I think the population health team is really, really, really important. So, Councilwoman, I see you ready to add to it.
Yeah, I just had a quick question about, I think that, I'm looking forward to my ride-along, I'm happy to do it. Obviously, this, though, is, it's a Band-Aid, it doesn't, you know, really, unless we're engaging with our residents in, yes, we're going to help you with this, but, you know, we want to refer you to other resources so that you're getting the treatment and that you're ready. It is that trust building, no question about it, because if they're ready and they see, you know, one of our pop health folks, and they're like, we're ready for treatment, let's take you right now, right? So I think that trust building is going to be really important. I don't know if there's a way that we can track the data on what the eventual outcome will be, because you're dropping off the naloxone, we're cutting down overdoses, people are not dying, which is really important and really good, but people may still be in the same situation that they're in. And so I want to try to figure out the best way to, and it's not your job to provide treatment, but it's, I just want to figure out what's the best way to make sure that folks are getting when they are ready for treatment, that that's what's happening and they're getting it, or they're getting other resources like housing, or they're getting other resources like, you know, mental health, whatever it is, to get out of the situation that they're in when they're ready. Because I feel like it would be, you know, your pop health folks are really doing a great job building that trust, but they probably don't want to see what's his name or what's her name in that same situation all the time and want to do better for that person. So I guess I'm just wondering what the eventual way that we can make sure that we're either collecting, somehow collecting the data, maybe we can't.
We are.
Okay.
We are, actually, and we're going a step further. We're not looking, they've built the relationships you're talking about. We're not trying to deliver to a patient to this door and walk away. It's this, they're actually working out a mechanism right now where they can check in and see, I think it's been nine people, but I know definitely three or four, they've actually had success stories reached back out to us because of those relationships. So we're trying to continue to build on that. We still have a way to go to learn, but we're closely tracking that.
Well, the other thing is, and this just goes on my campaign I'm about to start, which is, we need a legion of social workers that we can count on, that will be, you know, available to help with, you know, making sure that people are navigating through whatever systems that they need to go through, and, because that's not what your folks are doing. So is there a way to maybe add a social worker to the team? If there's a way to make sure that, I mean, I'm very, I think that's probably the next step. I mean, you've perfected the first piece, and maybe there's that second piece. So, and we have a top-notch social work school, and two of them, actually, in the city, so there could be an excellent opportunity there.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, excellent work, as always. Appreciate the work you guys are doing, and always appreciate how prepared you guys come to this meeting. You blow me out of the water every time with the level of detail and thought that you put into your work, and I wish... And I, I wish everybody operated this way. So I appreciate you guys so much. Any further questions?
Only that, since this is probably the last time we're meeting together with this committee, we don't know what the new council president's going to have this committee look like or what they're going to do. So I just want to say thank you very much for everything that you've done and provided us the information. And hopefully, our questions and concerns have helped to inform some of the work that you're doing as well because we're all in this together to try to save lives. So I'm just grateful. We'll continue to look forward to working with you in whatever way it ends up being in, in the new, in the new term. But also, you know, you know, this is, this has been, I think, a good experience for all of us. So we look forward to working with you in whatever way that comes out to be.
Yeah, I'll share that sentiment. It's been an absolute pleasure working with you guys over the last four years. And I can't be prouder of the work that you guys do day in, day out. We've had ups, we've had downs, but certainly more ups than downs. And I'm, I'm, I'm happy to see the progress that we're making. And I think, you know, it, it's interesting to hear that we've got a lot of folks coming down to watch our training and learn about some of the things that we're doing and learn from some of the ways that we're looking at overdoses and opioids and our response and the chase of cars. We, we are innovating at every turn and it, it's very encouraging to, to see what we're doing here. So I'm, I'm proud of the work you guys are doing. I'm really, really, really lucky to be working with you guys. And I look forward to working with you in the next term and I look forward to doing more of this at the very highest quality. So thank you, guys. Thank you so much. With that, this hearing is adjourned.